If I could get my board members' attention, we'll get this thing done in 40 minutes. Teresa?
What we have for you is a proposed application process or process and application for appointing citizen members to the Audit Committee. Chris and I developed this, Chris developed it by looking and seeing what was out there, and I appreciate the work that he did with this, looking to see what other jurisdictions had done. And then we've done some modification based on comments from the Audit Committee and also in bringing things in compliance with our internal policies. So there's two documents. The one that you have shown on the screen behind me is the recommended criteria and timeline. The timeline is assuming that we get the go-ahead to move forward with this, and the timeline is shown on the back. The work session today, if everything looks good and when you want to move forward with this, then I will approach Pam to have this put on the July 9th new business agenda, and then action on the 23rd, and then we can start the application process with the anticipated appointments being made in September. That's just for this first initial process where you would appoint two citizens or community members. And then subsequent years, it would go to the process that follows, that were, the appointments would be made the same time the board appointments are made in July. The criteria would be that the community members must possess all the knowledge needed to understand and evaluate risks, controls, internal audit activities. We're looking for the skills of accounting, but not limited to, accounting, auditing, business management, financial reporting, risk, school district finances, that global aspect that you would expect for an Audit Committee member that would bring to the table the expertise that the board members may or may not have. And so as a whole, the committee would have all of the skills necessary and knowledge necessary to oversee the audit function. The community members would be independent of day-to-day management, possess the requisite knowledge, have the ability to communicate with both the auditors and the public finance officers such as Susan and Kristin or anybody internally if that need to be, knowledgeable, as I said, of internal controls, financial statements, managerial, operational, programmatic performance, all types of audits. They must work in or be residents of Fairfax County or Fairfax City, since the city schools are within the jurisdiction of Fairfax County schools. That way, the city citizens would have the opportunity to be on the Audit Committee. Terms, we're recommending that the two appointees serve two-year terms that are staggered. So that the first year, we would be appointing one person for two years, one person for one year, and then it would go every other year, you would point. You can reappoint, but only for a maximum of two terms, I think is what we said. Three terms. Sorry, that was my mistake. And the cycle, the midterm vacancies would be filled as soon as possible or within, unless we're within three months, the end of term. The initial appointments, one community member appointed for one year, expiring June 30th, 2016. The second, two-year term, expiring June 30, 2017. Subsequently, it'd be two-year terms alternating, so we would appoint one person every year. The selection process, there would be an application. All applicants would be screened by the Office of Internal Audit, and no less than two qualified applicants per seat would be submitted to the Board Chair for consideration, but the Board Chair would make the recommendation for appointment to the school board, but the final selection rests with the board as a whole. Any questions on the criteria or timeline?
Ms. Evans?
I think that the timeline and the criteria look good. I did have one question on the timeline, if you would go back to the specific dates where it talks about new business.
Right above that.
That's right above. Could you scroll that up?
Just scroll, yeah, there you go.
So I'm wondering about the, okay, we've got the action item on July 23rd, and I'm just thinking because it's summer, if we wouldn't want a little bit more time, then we basically have a little bit more than two weeks. Did the Audit Committee consider having the application be like the 24th to the end of August? I'm just thinking, two weeks is not a lot to, a lot of time.
For the initial process, extending it would be not, wouldn't be a problem. It was brought back to the two-week process to come in line with FPAC. We were looking at the process that FPAC follows, trying to keep things consistent for the board.
I see.
But since this is a new process, the initial timeline for application, you may want to extend.
Right.
You have the option to extend the application process if we don't have enough qualified candidates for consideration. So you could go with the two weeks, and if at the end of that two weeks, we don't have enough qualified candidates, we would extend it further. But I don't see a problem with extending the initial process.
You know, alternatively, rather than, instead of putting it as a new business and action item.
Right.
If there's a consensus among the board members tonight, maybe we do away with that process and immediately advertise?
Yes, my advocacy would be if, whether we do it that way or if we just extend, I think that there would be a value to have a little bit more time in the initial application process.
So I have a couple of things. One, I would agree with Sandy that I think two weeks, particularly at this time of year, is not sufficient. You know, people, people are very busy, they, this is when they choose vacation, they may be prepping their kids for college, I mean, any, any number of things. So, one, I would favor more time at the front end because I think it'll make things easier, frankly, at the back end. Two, I do, I'm not in favor of residents from Fairfax City. A Fairfax City board wants to do something for themselves, but we aren't accountable to the residents of Fairfax City and that, you know, they're a different jurisdiction, you know, period. So I would not be in favor of that. They can't vote for us, and, you know, having that relationship, I think, with, you know, with people who can hold us accountable, I think is important. The, I wasn't quite sure because it went back and forth when you said the terms. So can you highlight again what you were trying to communicate on what happens when and how many terms from the initial to the repeat?
Initially, you would appoint two people. One would have a one-year term, expiring June 30, 2016. The second person appointed initially would have a two-year term, which would expire June 2017. In 2016, we would appoint someone for a two-year term, so that it would be a two-year rotating term. It's just the initial term of one individual will be one year.
But with the three-time maximum, then that means somebody could be on the Audit Committee for six years?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not in favor of that either. I think, I think that's far too long. So I would say no more than two, two terms.
Okay.
At a maximum. I think it keeps things fresh. And so I would think that that would affect, because of the staggered terms at the beginning, you know, I would just say flat out, no more than two reappointments. So.
Two reappointments or one reappointment?
Two appointments.
One reappointment.
Two total.
Two total.
Two appointments, right.
You know, an appointment plus a reappointment, two terms.
No more than four years total.
But it would be problematic with the first one, because if the first person's only serving a year, it isn't really years, it's appointments.
Correct.
So that's why I'm saying appointments. So.
That makes sense.
Two terms.
Okay.
So there's that. And then, I'm not sure I understand the vetting process of who determines who's qualified and how that navigates its way through the process, because it sounds like internal audit picks who's qualified, and then the chairman just recommends one of them to the whole board. And then does the board see everybody in contact? I mean, I'm not sure I understand the filtering process.
Initially, what was just, what is being recommended is that we screen the applicants for the board and make recommendation to the board of the qualified applicants, and then the appointment to committee would follow the same process that all other committee appointments follow, and that would be for the chair to make the appointment.
But the chair doesn't really make the appointment on all other committees?
Well, the chair, I'm sorry, the chair recommend for appointment to the whole board, but the board itself would do the appointing.
That's not really the way our other appointments work either. So I'm interested to hear what other people have to say, because I'm not convinced about that part of the process either, so.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
I agree, I think two terms are plenty. I don't support three terms. So if I try to think about the way we do the appointees for FPAC, definitely, I think it is important for staff to screen them and make sure they meet the requirements, so we don't have to do that. And there's always the awkward part in FPAC, because you don't want to talk about people in public, but there is, the committee kind of looks at the applications and makes a recommendation, and then the board has to deal with it. So I don't know if you want to involve the Audit Committee in making a recommendation or a top one or two, and then having it come to the whole board. I agree with you. How do you figure this out so we all have an understanding of what the choices were? Part of me feels like the whole board's going to probably want to see who was there, but to have the whole board choose that is going to be really difficult. So then how do you narrow this down? I don't have a good suggestion.
Any other board member with a good suggestions? Mrs. Strauss?
Since I missed the committee meeting, being at Disney World, I agree that maybe two terms is enough, so it's a four-year. Seems to me with, we were first choosing the members for FPAC, there, the CPDC did, you know, looked to make sure that whoever was in the pool was qualified, because there was a, right, okay, all right, because that's going to be the issue is, is if we agree on sort of the list of assets that the person comes with, so if staff recommends that, I guess the question is whether or not the Audit Committee would take a look with staff with the first go-round of their recommendations, reading the mind of the rest of the board. There may be a desire for that, but that, it is authorized by the entire board. So I guess that was, since I missed the committee meeting, I don't know how that discussion went.
We didn't have much discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Akofex?
Just chiming into people's thought process, I kind of like where the road Janie is heading down, where the staff and the Audit Committee work in tandem together and then bring forward that to the board. I, I agree with the, I think we have a little problem with that first one, but I guess that first person will be the only one appointed for one year.
Correct.
So aside from that person, everybody else can serve four years, but that person could potentially just serve three.
Okay.
Actually, even less than three, depending upon when the appointment starts. If it is October, it's going to end June 30th, so it will be like nine months.
Potentially have a one-time waiver.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that for that first person, there may be, have to be a waiver, but I, I do, I think four is good.
I think it's two, two appointments with the, with the waiver for the first one, having staff and the committee work together and bring those to the full board for our review.
Okay. Any other board member? Let's make some decisions. On the term limit, do we agree basically on two-term? Okay, with, let's see whether there's enough support. Okay, do we make exceptions for the first appointments, because they are going to be less than full term? Appalling? Okay, let's go with making, just for the one person, not, not the other person who already gets one year and nine months, but person who already gets probably nine months or even eight months, depending upon when the term starts, that's going to be the exception. Okay, that is done. And as far as appointing, screening is concerned, internal audit office with Audit Committee, is that, is there where the consensus is? Yes, Ms. Smith?
I, I think the, the staff members should screen them and only bring forward the qualified ones to the Audit Committee, and then the Audit Committee could go through a process and, and make a decision. I don't know if they come down to their top two or top three and then recommend from that, but I don't think you want the committee to screen them for qualifications.
Okay, any other comment on that one?
I mean, I guess I would agree with that, but I think that if, if there are applications that are quote-unquote "pulled" because they're deemed to not meet, I think you should at least, I still think that the Audit Committee should probably see them with an indication of why staff felt that they didn't meet, as opposed to, you know, having, having the complete culling happen. So, you know, say, here are the ones that we deemed to not meet, let's look at these, but, you know, if there's any questions, then the audit staff can say, well, you know, you say that didn't meet, but, you know, we think otherwise. So I, I like kind of that combo approach.
So let's do this, you know, step by step. So initial screening will be done by internal audit, and then Audit Committee convenes and reviews the recommended candidates, but Audit Committee has a right to see all the, you know, other applicants as well. Is that, is that agreeable to everybody so far? Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Okay, that's agreeable. Let's see whether we have a majority support for that. And after that, now, next question is whether Audit Committee present one or two or more? Where are you?
I'm sorry.
Whether Audit Committee recommends one, two, or even more?
I, I do like the idea that based on the applicant pool, the size of the applicant pool, that, that it may bring its top candidates, and I wouldn't say that we should limit that, because if there's, you know, two best out of one pool or three best out of one pool, I think that they ought to bring fourth, the best, the best recommendations.
So leave it up to Audit Committee's discretion? Is that Audit Committee's discretion, is that how you want to put it? Mr. Akofex?
Yeah, but I do think you need to limit, or else the Audit Committee is going to be perpetually just screening, you know, 10 people, and maybe no more than the top five. I mean, you know.
Five would be way too many.
You need five. Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Evans?
What are you talking?
Two or three.
Okay.
There's going to be two to fill.
There's going to, right.
But I mean, per position.
Each position.
Per position, I think, you know, your top two or three, but filtering through all of them and bringing it down to one and bringing that to the full board doesn't really have the full board making the decision. What it says is, you guys have come up with, hey, listen, these are our best, you know, two or maybe three, but I can imagine your best two, and you present the pros and the cons of why you prefer one or the other, or just pros and cons, and then let the board make the decision.
Ms. Smith?
So it always comes down to the details of how that decision gets made, based in, you know, would you have a closed meeting, or you have to decide how you get to the names that show up for the agenda item. So I think that process has to be clarified. You know, I would think if you're hiring, they're not really personnel, but they're on the committee. I guess I would need to know how in the heck that decision's going to get made legally.
Mrs. Smith?
Ms. Strauss, close.
Mrs. Strauss.
Sorry. I would think it would be a closed, because it would be specifically named person, we'd be looking at resumes and personally identifiable stuff.
I, my cut feeling is not. My cut feeling is not.
Well, but if we are reviewing resumes, I know Teresa has something to say.
How do you select FPAC members? Because I think it would follow the same process when it comes to committee discussion.
You mean, really? So you discuss?
If there are more than two board members, it's going to be an open meeting.
Wow.
Ms. Evans?
So I'm just trying to get clarity on this. So if the Audit Committee brought us three names, those three names would be public?
When, even when Audit Committee discusses names.
All the names would be public.
Will be in public. If it is a committee of more than two board members, it will be all in public, so it could be embarrassing.
So they'll all be public?
Yeah. It could be embarrassing to our candidates.
Yeah, that.
Mrs. Strauss?
Yeah, I think it'd be very embarrassing to candidate. I would think legally that we could, even if CPCC didn't, I think it's unfair to the people who are applying. If they know that somehow the discussion of their resume is going to be in a public session, I would be very reluctant as a citizen to apply.
But the resume is got to be public anyway.
Yeah, but still, us discussing personal characteristics, we wouldn't do that for any other employee, so.
Because we'll be discussing who's better than who.
Exactly, yeah. I think that that.
That would be.
I think that's very unfair to the individuals.
Mrs. Smith?
So what I'm hearing, and I agree with this, is board members just don't want to be presented one name without any input about who the candidates are and why that name was chosen. Can I recommend that you get some legal advice about the process and what we can do with pointing out the fact that, how do we do a process so that board members have enough knowledge to understand where the choice is and that they can provide some feedback?
You know, board members could always get copies of resumes, copies of resumes, and those, you know, everybody's who are recommended by a internal audit office or, you know, Audit Committee, but if Audit Committee meets to deliberate to make a recommendation, it's going to be in public if a committee does it. Whether even, even if committee is less than three people, if it's a committee, it has to be open. And I don't think we need to ask Mr. Foster for that. I think I can pretty confidently say that I have, Mr. Stork and Ms. Evans?
I, I think the whole process is going to have to be open until, actually, the whole process is going to have to be open, even the resumes that we get. I mean, if they're sent to school board members, then somebody can FOIA those as well. I mean, tell me, tell me how that's not FOI-able.
No, that's not the point, I'm just saying, it's going to be.
And I understand, to me, the most critical, not the resume, the most critical part of this is when we're discussing individually, however, the pros and cons of one versus another. That's, I don't, I'm not one to discuss that publicly, and, I mean, I'm doing one-to-one, I realize I'm not going to break the law either, but I'm, but that's, that's going to be one of those things that I think.
Okay, Ms. Evans?
So would it be possible for the committee chair to have one-on-one conversations and?
One-on-one with everybody?
No, I mean with the committee members, you know, with committee members and see if there's consensus? I'm just throwing that out, as opposed to having a public debate of some sort?
I mean, they can always, you know, they can be tried, but, you know, if there are differences in opinions, then it's going to be difficult for the chairman to, okay? And Mrs. Strauss?
I suggest that you consult Mr. Foster to see if this would, at least in discussing the resumes, whether people are qualified or not, whether or not that would constitute the ability to do a closed session, because the Audit Committee, if we were discussing...
If you are discussing our staff, employees, that's subject to, that's, you know, you have to do it in closed meeting.
Right, exactly.
But they are not, they are not employees.
I would suggest that you, that you at least ask Mr. Foster.
I would ask, but I am pretty confident about that. Mr. Akofex and then Mrs. Strauss?
I'm just pretty confident about that too, just serving in chairs this year, and the, the questions I've asked, I'm pretty certain here, where Mr. Moon's right.
Okay, Mrs. Schurz?
So I would agree with your initial inclination that this is an open process. I want to remind everybody, really what we're talking about is deciding between likely two individuals at most by the end of a process per position. And if, if you've already, you know, kind of ferreted through, you know, all the resumes and you're down to two, you, we're not likely to have much negative to say about it, it's really just the merits of one candidate or the strengths of one candidate versus another. And I don't see any reason why, I mean, honestly, if somebody puts forward their name to serve with the board for two years, and if they're uncomfortable about having their strengths discussed publicly, they're the wrong person for the position anyway. And so it's not like we're going to be talking about people who clearly, you know, won't cut it at that point. Now you're talking about the two best and what, you know, what may be the merits of one versus another, and I, I think that's a reasonable conversation app.
Okay, Mrs. Schurz, I think you're talking about the final stage at this point, I'm talking about initial screening. If the suggestion is initial screening be done by internal auditor, audit office staff with school board members, be that Audit Committee members, that, that initial screening has to be in public.
Hmm.
And then we have a whole bunch, we could have a lot of applications, and that has to be in public.
Okay. Hmm, okay.
So that is why I think, you know, we, that is why, you know, staff was suggesting that initial screening be done by internal audit office.
Hmm. Well, I still think that what, what was proposed of having the internal audit staff look at them and say, okay, this is who we've deemed qualified and this is who we've deemed not qualified, and just having that available for the Audit Committee to review, I mean, somebody can sit in an Audit Committee meeting and flip through the not qualifieds, they could ask a question or so, and then you can get down to the merits. And then I think Ms. Smith is right, if we just seek Mr. Foster's input, I, I'm sure that this can be done, you know, well.
I was certainly talking to Mr. Foster, but I am, I am very, very confident about this has to be an open process, and, you know, if, if the board members consensus is that, you know, those who are applying to become members, you know, should understand that we may discuss, you know, we could have put that, when you advertise that, you know, this deliberation will be open to public.
As long as you.
We could make that clear.
You could put it, yes, make it clear, you just put it in the thing up front that this will be a part of an open process.
So could you agree on that, that, you know, initial, initial screening be done by jointly by a Audit Committee and internal audit staff, and then bring to the full board no more than three per position for recommendation, and full board, and then full board will, you know, be, you know, could be a work session or, you know, special meeting or, or regular meeting, have that, and then pick, pick two, because we are pointing to, is that, is that agreeable? Raise your hand if that's agreeable. Okay, all right?
So Mr. Moon, what we're going to change this to is that the initial screening of applications for qualifications is be done by internal audit, and then the qualified candidates will be discussed at Audit Committee, but the, those that we've deemed not qualified, you get the resumes anyway. And then the Audit Committee as a whole will recommend no more than three people per position to the board for appointment.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And the next one was, one which was Fairfax City, whether Fairfax City resident and those work in the Fairfax City should be included or not? There was an issue raised by Mrs. Schurz, Mrs. Strauss?
I would support being able to include somebody from Fairfax City, after all, they pay per student fee, part of their memorandum of understanding with us is that we provide educational services and they pay for it. So the only thing that they are voting for is, is the city of Fairfax owns their buildings, otherwise we provide the services and they pay for it. So I, I continue to support if somebody from Fairfax City wants to be on this.
Okay, any others thought, comment? If not, let's see whether those who want to include Fairfax City residents or those who work in the city, raise your hand. Okay, I think that's the majority, so we'll include Fairfax City as. that's the majority. Also, we'll include Fairfax City. Now, the next question is that two-week application time window, you know, there seems to be a consensus that that is too short. Mrs. Smith.
I'm sorry, I'm going backwards.
Oh, that's not allowed?
I'm just reading this one. It says audit community members must work in or be residents of Fairfax County, so we could be picking somebody who lives in Maryland and they work here?
Yes.
I think they need to be residents of Fairfax County.
Okay, okay. If, let's see, okay, that, that's the interpretation of the particular language, but if you want limited to a residence, then work doesn't matter. Residents of a Fairfax County, of Fairfax City, if that's the concern, let's, let's see whether, with a show of hand. Okay, that's the majority, we'll do that.
Definitely just Fairfax County.
Has to be resident, has to be resident.
County and city or just county?
County and, county or city.
Okay.
It cannot be both. Ms. Evans, we had that discussion long ago. Okay, that application time, that suggested time is about two weeks, and there seemed to have been a consensus that that's not long enough. Do you wanna make it about a month? Is there a consensus for about a month? Raise your hand if, if it is a month. Okay, okay. Now, the question is this. If we add two weeks to that application, that timeline, we could either delay the whole thing by, delay the appointment by two weeks, or if you feel that this does not have to go through new business and action, the regular meetings, and just to do it tonight by consensus, then we could start doing it right away.
The latter.
Your, your thought, comments?
My support is for the latter.
Or just consensus, see the consensus, whether there's a consensus not to go through school board action and, and just tonight. Or you, you still wanna do action without new business? Still wanna take on action?
No, we don't need to, to post it as new business. We can just go to action.
Oh, you wanna go to action, okay. There's, okay, there could be three options. New business and action, or just to action, or just by consensus today and four go with the school board action process. Okay, Mr. Stork.
I think the key for me is that it be posted at least two weeks ahead of time so that whatever we do, there's public notice, if you will, about who that person is before we vote on it. I don't feel compelled to have new business action, but I do want it to be posted publicly available with enough ahead of time that somebody could, if they had a concern or an issue, they could bring that up.
Okay, okay. If we, if we do, if we just, if, if, if we decide to do just to action, even if we post it tomorrow, it's not gonna be two full weeks. It's gonna be a little shorter, two weeks.
I'm sorry, I was going, I thought you were talking about the appointment process.
Oh, not the appointment. Appointment is not going to be until like September or October timeframe.
I misunderstood what you were doing.
And I'm misunderstanding, too. I'm assuming when you say action and a month, that, that we have a full month before we're notifying the public that we're going to take action on this?
No, no, would you, would you take a look at the timeline? I'm looking at the timeline. That's what I'm talking about. This whole, what, what we discussed today, whether, whether that has to be, that has to be action on this has to be taken at a regular meeting.
You mean action on the actual timeline?
The criteria and selection process, what you have agreed to do. So look at this, July 9th, July 9th, community member selection process, what you have agreed upon today. That's gonna come up as a new business. That's the suggested timeline, and then vote on July 23rd. I personally don't see the need to go through that just to do it with a consensus tonight and just to start advertising right away and see whether we can get as many applications as possible. I mean, that's... Ms. Evans.
So I think, I, I wouldn't be violently opposed to that, but I think my preference really just to be, to use our process would be to have July 9th as new business, have July 23rd as the action item, but then have the app, the request for applications, we could even start July 24th, I think, rather than July 27th. But I would then have the month, have a month that starts at either July 24th or July 27th and simply go to August 28th. I think that would give more people an opportunity to know this was out there, to know they can apply. It would give us more time, basically, to get applicants. So that's my advocacy.
So keep, keep July 9th and July 23rd as written above.
Right.
That's what you were saying. Any other suggestion? Okay, Mr. Nakofek.
I agree with what Ms. Evans said.
Any other? Yes.
We can extend the application to July, to August 28th. If we're gonna have the audit committee as a whole vet the applicants anyway, the audit committee won't meet until sometime in September. So what we're pushing forward, the actual board process of approving the, this...
Audit committee can meet even prior to September.
So the audit committee would meet in October, in August to vet the applicants?
Oh, audit committee will work hard.
Okay. I was just looking at the timeline that I was provided.
Whoever the committee members will be, but, it's the next of the committee. So, Mrs. Schurz.
So is there a reason why if it's posted for new business, why we can't just start the request for applications on July 9th? Because I actually, I, I disagree with these two, and I more agree with you, that we could just get the consensus tonight and start the applications, because that's a long, what I was looking for originally when I made the comment, I'm looking for the longest period of time for us to...
Get applications.
To get applications, for the, for the news to be out there. And so if we took a consensus tonight to just start seeking applications, that, I mean, we've already made the decision to do this, so I'm not exactly sure what the new business in action, what that achieves, because we've already voted to do this. But if everybody commits to the new business in action, then I would say let's ask for applications starting on July 9th. Let's not wait until after the 23rd.
Mrs. Smith.
I think it's important to do this as new business in action. That's our process. We let the community see what we're working on, so that if there is any community feedback about this. So I, I think that we need to keep that. Sandy suggested then starting the application process July 24, and you really want to keep the applications out to August 28th? I don't know that four weeks is better than three weeks. I don't know timing and the best timeframe. But if we want to keep the September 10th appointment, if we go till August 28th, is there enough time then to do the screening from the 28th and have a name ready by the 10th? There's the squeeze timeframe. So I don't, you know, so I don't know if the 28th's important. Do you want to back off from September 10th? Because I'm not willing to back off at the front end. So it's like...
You're not willing to back off from what?
I'm not willing to back off from the front end of the timeline. I think that community feedback is really important. But the other piece is, most of our appointments, we don't have them out there for two weeks. I heard Dan say he wants the name out there for the public, but typically, when somebody new comes on board and we do an appointment, we just vote that night. You know, we don't have the names out there. So, you know, I don't know if it's enough that the name gets out there with the, when the agenda gets posted the week, you know, the agenda gets posted Friday and then we vote the following Thursday. So the name's out there. It's not like the name would show up that night. But I think on that end, you could get rid of the new business in action, because you're not looking at having the appointee till the 24th.
Mrs. Strauss.
Yeah, I would rather do the new business in action and then start posting on the 24th.
Ms. Evans?
I'm just looking at the calendar. If we did start the application process on July 24th, four weeks after that would actually be August 21st. So we could make it the 21st when it's closed. And then that would give, Teresa, would that give, give staff enough time to go through and have what we need done?
I don't think the problem or the, it depends on volume.
Okay.
But I, I wouldn't see why we couldn't read through the resumes and have them in two different aisles in a short period of time. I think where the holdup is gonna come is getting the audit committee members to have a date where we can all get together. Forming meeting dates with multiple board members is more difficult than us doing the vetting process inside.
I don't know who the audit committee members will be.
And we don't know who the committee's members are until the end of July.
Who the audit committee chair will be, but, 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 but I think we'll just mandate them to do their work by certain date, and we have deadlines. So could we...
Mr. Moon, respectfully, respectfully, I don't think that's right, because you're mandating four people to do something in the one-month period time that they have off, you know? And people may not want to accept the appointment based upon that. So I don't think that's a good...
No, they can, they can do it in September.
But I don't think that's a good idea.
They can do September.
It can be September, yes. But I'm not talking, I, I thought you were talking about mandating them to meet and screen in August.
Yeah, by, by September 10th. So could we, could you, could you agree on this? Because I wanna be able to get to the next issue. July 9th and July 23rd is a new business in action, and we start advertising and collect, and start receiving applications from July 24th for four weeks. That will end on August 21. And then audit committee does its work and come up, you know, hopefully with a, a recommended, you know, no more than three for each positions by September 10th. And if they're simply unable to do that, they still have a little more time leeway before, before a, a final action on September 24th so that we could have somebody come in and start doing the work from October. Is that, is that, is that agreeable? Yes, ma'am.
So do we really feel like we need to put the name for new business and then vote two weeks later? Or are you comfortable just doing action on the name? Just action on the name? I don't think we need new business in that.
And then if you do just action on the name, then the board members have additional time to get those resumes, because they're not mandated to do it by the 10th.
There's two things that could happen with that. If we get it screened and we're ready to go, we could just vote on it on the 10th. I don't know if we'd be ready that quick. If not, then the voting date would be the 24th, and that gives us time.
If the board agrees that we don't have to go through two phases, new business and action on the names, and if the audit committee, you know, the board is prepared to take on action.
Yes. I think if you make the argument at the front end that our process is new business in action, that you have to have the fidelity of that all the way through. So if we're committing to new business in action at the front end, you gotta do new business in action at the back end.
Okay, Mr. Nakofek.
No, but we're, that's apples and oranges a little bit, Ms. Schultz, because this is a selection process, and we're talking about the process, but where, when we actually appoint somebody, it's always just action. It's just that, at that point, it becomes the committee appointment, whereas you're talking about a selection process, and, and it's a little bit different, because it's a new, new type of, it's a new, new citizen advisory panel for this committee.
Do we, do we put on our agenda new business when we're going to be appointing people to other committees, F PAC or anything? It never shows up?
Nope, it's just action.
All right, well, then, then that works.
Ms. Evans?
I guess my only issue there would be, would we have time to post it? Because now we're talking about September 10th, or are we talking about September 24th to be the action item? Which, which one?
Depending upon where we are at the, at that point, whether board is ready.
Okay, I have no problem with it just being an action item and not being new business as long as we have the time to post.
Absolutely, absolutely. So...
So by this proposal, we would simply be cutting out September 10th.
We're just cutting out September 10th. So that's, so that, basically, that's a flexible at this point. Could it be September 10th or September 24th?
Okay.
With just action, without going through new business. Okay, I think we are done with this, and then just take a one quick look at the application form itself. You know, it's just an application form.
Okay, the application form on the front, it talks about the qualifications. The applicants must be independent from day-to-day management, FCPS, have the requisite knowledge we talked about earlier, ability to communicate that we have discussed. Interested citizens can apply during the period by submitting an introductory cover letter summarizing why they want to be considered for the appointment, the application, which is this form. And they're required to provide written responses to four questions, which are included on the back of the form, and we'll go through those. We're also giving them links to the strategic governance manual, which will need to be updated once this process is approved, and the internal audit charter. The deadline for submission will be based on whatever date we set. All applicants, all applications will go directly to the school board office. And I think based on the discussion we just had, there needs to be a notation on here somewhere that applicant screening will be taking place during a public board meeting.
It has to be very clear.
Okay, on the reverse side. Name, address, county of Fairfax Magisterial District or city, email, phone, and then the questions. Describe any professional community or community experience that you believe qualifies you to serve on the committee. They can also just attach a resume. Describe any previous experience or involvement with FCPS or other school divisions. State why you're interested in serving on the audit committee, and describe your understanding of the role of the audit committee. And then the conflict of interest questions, these are generic. These are things that we've taken from audit committee applicants, applications across other jurisdictions. Are you currently or have you been employed with FCPS in the last two years? Do you have any children or grandchildren in the school system? Within the last two years, have you sold goods or services to FCPS? If yes, please explain. Within the last two years, have you owned or had a direct material interest in an entity or held a leadership position in an entity that provided goods or services to FCS, particular to a purchase order? And, and the immediate family member, do you have an immediate family member that could answer yes to any of the ones above? And the definition of immediate family members, we talked about in audit committee, and I went back and pulled what Fairfax County uses as immediate family members in all of our regulations. That actually expanded the definition of immediate family from what we had before. One of the things that I think it's important is an answer to yes to any of the above, with the exception of are you an employee, does not necessarily eliminate you from being able to be on the audit committee. It depends on the materiality of what it is. If you, if you work for a company, let's say you work for Office Depot, and we still had an Office Depot contract, but you're somebody that works for Office Depot, but you don't have a material interest, or even you have no influence over the contract or what services we get or anything like that, that's not gonna exclude you from this. So this is not necessarily designed to exclude everybody that would answer yes. It is designed to get the information so that you would know what level of relationship a person may or may not have with the school division.
Okay, Mrs. Schurz.
So I'm not sure I understand question number two being included as a potential conflict of interest, because if you look at two in conjunction with five, I don't know what that nexus of, of all of those relationships and what the Venn diagram is that's left of people who wouldn't, who, who wouldn't somehow comply, you know? So either we would have to state so overtly that other than, you know, first of all, we should say, number one is, you may not apply for this position if you are employed by FCPS. So to ask that question, if we've stated you may not, seems sort of silly. And then from that point forward, it should be, you know, potential areas of conflict, you know, subject to the board. But then it, to me, it wouldn't only be whether or not they had children or grandchildren in FCPS. It would be, is, is your spouse an employee of FCPS, or is one of your immediate family members, as defined below, an FCPS employee? Because that's a whole different, you know, potential conflict of interest that we at least need to be made aware of. But I don't think we're expressing here on this statement, on this form, very accurately that these are not, in fact, necessarily conflicts of interest. They are just potential...
Yeah, I think what might clarify this, and this goes along with what Mr. Stork had said at audit committee, I think we need to change possibly the title of the section. Instead of saying conflict of interest questions, just leave them as general questions.
Our form that we fill out is a statement of economic interest. You know, this is a statement of interest. You know, you are declaring your personal interest. Yeah, it's a statement.
I would like to state an interest as opposed to conflict because especially number two, they may not create conflict at all.
But I think that we have to include employee as well.
Sure. Did you get that, Teresa?
Statement of interest questions. And then for employee, that would, that's covered in number five, but you want it clarified more in number two? Because number five says, can any of these people answer yes to one, two, or three? So it's kind of redundant.
I would take out number one.
Okay.
I would put number five as number one.
How would you change the wording of the question for number five to move it up?
No, I would just put, what currently appears as number five as the first question.
What's the reference? There's a difference.
Well, it would obviously then say to numbers two through four below instead of one through three above. You know, it would, you're taking out number one because you can't, I mean, you're getting them to answer a question that they're already prohibited to, out of one of those two answers.
If they're currently employed, yes. But what if it was in the last two years? Do you care?
I don't know.
That's the only question I have. Because the original question was, have you been employed with FCPS in the last two years? And we added, are you currently employed or have you been employed at audit committee? But does it matter if you've been employed in two years?
It makes far more sense to say, have you been employed in the last two years as opposed to the currently? Because you can't be applying. You've already, you know, crossed a threshold you shouldn't have crossed.
Okay. Ms. Evans, and then let's come to a conclusion.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't somewhere explain what was just explained to us, that answering yes to most of these questions does not preclude someone from applying or being selected. That was my, when I first read the form.
I think the intent at the bottom was that, but I think that could be made clearer. And then that could be stated right below that statement of interest questions so that they can read it.
Yeah, I think there might be some people who would assume that a yes answer would exclude them, and then they wouldn't apply. So I would just want to make sure.
Ms. Evans, could you make it, could you bring, could you state that right underneath? Right underneath, state point two.
What I'm suggesting, a statement of interest questions, all applicants must respond, but an answer of yes does not prohibit appointment.
Correct.
I mean, I guess you said other than if you were a current FCPS employee?
That's already come off.
That's already said, okay.
Okay, could you move on with that? Okay, thank, Ms. Smith?
So where does it clearly state that employees are unable to apply? Is that somewhere clear?
On the first page, it says you must be independent of day-to-day management. I was going to add a bullet that says you cannot be a current employee of FCPS.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. That ends...
Wait, I think you need to look at your next steps. Are you...
Next step. Next step.
Well, just so there's consensus here.
You know, next step is this will be brought to a board action on July 23rd with, as a new business on July 9th. I think that's next step. What else do we do?
I have one question about the application. Changing the questions like we've talked about, do I need to reorder them? Like we were talking, say, below as opposed to that makes sense?
I don't think, I think this makes sense. This order, otherwise it's going to be confusing.
I just want to make sure I got everybody's comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll take a two...
Wait, wait, look up there. She has the next steps. I know, but you did great.
In the second bullet, I would say instead of sent to board, it would say sent to the audit committee.
Oh, wait, everything's supposed to be...
Well, it would be available. Instead of top candidates referred to the board, no more than three candidates per position. Or a maximum, you can just say a maximum of three candidates per position will be referred to the board by the audit committee.
The next bullet down, instead of committee, it should be applicant must be residents. Okay.
The board action, wasn't that 10? That's not right.
It was the 10 to the 20.
Honor before.
Honor before, yeah.
Honor before 9/24.
I think we are too. Absolutely. Is everybody good? All right.
Okay, we'll take a two-minute break, and then we'll go to the next one.